Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoke City Council meeting. This is Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. It is 6:30 PM. If you have not already done so, I'd like to remind you to turn your cellphones off or on vibrate. And Madam Clerk, we have roll call, please.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Mayor Protam Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Mayor Bob Lingle.
Here. If you'll please rise, remove your hats, and join us in the invocation by Pastor Bill Denton. Up the podium, please. Podium, there you go. We want to see your smiling face.
My ears are not as acute as they once were. Sorry about that, Bob.
No problem.
Almighty God, we thank you for the abundance of blessings we share, the magnificence of your creation, this globe which unites us to one another all the way around, for the nation and state in which we dwell, and particularly at this moment, for this community of Lompoke which we love. We pray for the members of the council as they deal with the issues, often trivial and mundane, but sometimes much more serious, occasionally controversial, even explosive. But we pray that the Spirit of your love might dwell within us in all of the activities and deliberations of this occasion. We thank you that you are the giver of peace and assurance and guidance. This we pray through you. Amen.
Amen.
Quite a privilege. Councilmember Mosby just reminded me that he was a student of mine at Lompoke High School far more years ago than either one of us would like to admit.
Thank you, Sarah. Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice alone.
Thank you. Okay, so presentations presented elsewhere on September 16th, I presented a proclamation to the electric car, at the electric car show on South Ice Street. This is a proclamation in honor of National Drive Electric Week. And tonight, we're going to have two presentations. The first one, we'll have from the Fallen Warriors Project. They're going to give us an update on what's happening with that project in Beatty Park.
Good evening, Mayor Bob Lingle, City Council members, ladies and gentlemen. I am very honored to be able to provide, to come before you and provide an update of the status and the status of our construction out at the Fallen Warriors Memorial. You can dim the lights, yeah. This is the, we were formed seven years ago in November of 2011, and during that ceremony where we dedicated the flagpole, a group of us discussed the significance of what we had just done, and it's a little difficult to see, but at the feet, there was a little pedestal with some seals of all of the military services there. And one of the observations was, you know, this ought to be a little more impressive than a little pedestal. We ought to be able to do something better than this. And so, we got together and says, well, why don't we just explore the options? Out of that, we formed the Fallen Warriors Memorial. And so, this was the beginning, November of 2011. And, oh, okay, thank you. This memorial will honor all of the warriors who have fallen in the line of duty, not just for a particular period of time or a conflict. Which one does what?
Right here on the right.
Oh, this one here. Okay. One of the first things we did was develop a project goal to kind of keep us on track. And we also felt it was important to be very careful about how we defined the Lompoke Valley, so that we could do a better job of identifying people we should honor at the memorial, and to understand what Lompoke Valley means, or at least from the perspective of this memorial. We also created a vision that would help us guide our design in particular, but also, when time come to make changes, we also held it up to this vision to make sure that we were not getting far astray of what we really wanted to end up with when we were complete. And I think you'll agree, when we look at, when you look at the memorial that we have created, you'll agree, we've maintained, we've been pretty faithful to our vision. This is a computer graphic based on the engineering that we developed when we first conceived of the memorial. And I show this picture to illustrate some of the things that we had to do when we were confronted with fiscal realities and some of the construction problems. We had to make some changes to this, and I'll just point out a few of them to you. But these, these seats right here were intended to be a semicircle of black absolute granite. And I got to admit, that would have been very impressive. But cost constraints kind of set in, and we had to eliminate this and go to three prefabricated benches, which I think are still very, very nice, but we had, it was just too much to try to get the black absolute granite in there. We went from five pedestals to put the Fallen Warriors names on, and we now have only four. And we eliminated the circle down here, and we moved the veterans, because, the veterans' wall, because when it was on paper, located in this location as it is, it looked just fine. But when we got into construction and we saw where it was, what that was really going to be, in reality, it wasn't too fine, because it blocked the view, it was in the way of the watering system, and being made of black absolute granite, it would have been a nightmare to try to maintain. So, we moved it up into this area, and this is not really representative of what we have now. It's much shorter distance than what this would lead you to believe. But other than that, it's pretty close to what you see. This was the location prior to the start of construction. The tree here, the cypress tree died because of blight, and the City of Lompoke Parks Department removed it. And this is the memorial now. And I'd like to, I'd like to thank Charles, I mean, Michael Collins, who took this picture with the benefit of a drone, so a little bit of new technology is involved here. But it's a beautiful picture, and I think that when you go up there, you'll agree, it's a beautiful memorial. I want to, one of the things I wanted to do tonight was give the citizens of Lompoke a sense of how the program developed in the seven years. But we started out just saying, we need a bunch of money. And, you know, when we were looking at the design, it was pretty clear that we were going to need to earn a lot of money, so we set about that task pretty quickly. And you can see, as we went down through 11, 12, 13, 14, we were doing pretty good, but it soon dawned on us that we needed to really understand what the cost was going to be. So, in 2013, we did a bottoms up, we did a budget review, and it was a very conservative review, but it was done by some professionals. And they said, if you didn't get any help at all from contractors, or if it costs you just whatever you pay, then it's going to be in the neighborhood of $200,000. Well, that was an eye-opener. So, we got serious about earning money, and we developed, we started working on the red, white, and blue dinner dance, which the citizens of Lompoke were really great, were really grateful for the way Lompoke turned out to support these dinners. And you can see how our income grew over the years, primarily through that, but also through donations from the citizens of Lompoke, and various merchants in Lompoke, service organizations. But one of the things that we really thought we would get a lot of support from was large corporations, and that just didn't happen. So, this memorial is a tribute to the citizens of Lompoke and how they supported its development and construction. So, the bottom number down there is where we stand today, and most all of our bills are paid. We got some outstanding ones, we know that are coming, that are going to be pretty significant. Plus, we have a memorandum of understanding, we got to put back about $5,000 to, in an exchequer account for the future. But we're going to have a little bit of money to try and maintain and update the memorial over time. And our fundraising events are going to continue. We fully expect to continue to conduct the red, white, and blue dinner dances in the future. It's been a very successful event. It seems the citizens of Lompoke really enjoy it, so we intend to try to continue on with that event. This was our action plan. The end work there is an error. We're completed. We got all of our permits and approvals, and we started construction. And we've completed everything except the veterans' wall down here. We haven't completely fitted, and the entrance wall requires a little bit of work yet. The landscaping is essentially complete except for around the veterans' wall, but it's essentially complete. A particular note, our dedication ceremony will be on November the 3rd at 11:00 PM in Beatty Park. And we've got a fairly robust maintenance program in planning, and we've got people dedicated to execute that plan. Some of the major benefactors of the memorial, first off, I just cannot thank the citizens of Lompoke enough for all the support we have received in building this memorial. It absolutely would not be possible without all the love and financial support that we received. And also, the Fallen Warriors Memorial Committee really worked really hard. We had about seven, we had 17 people on the committee, and they worked hard. Parks Recreation and Pool Foundation, of which we are a member, provided a lot of top-level management support for us, and a lot of good advice as we negotiated some of the steps that we had to go through in order to build the memorial. MWM Architects were the people that designed the facility, and they did most of, they did just about all the work pro bono. So, all the drawings and all that were all done pro bono from MWM Architects. City of Council staff, I just can't thank you folks enough for your guidance and support during this process. The Margaret Waller family were a big supporters. Service organizations, I was almost hesitant to put any up there, but some did a whole lot of support, but everyone, a lot of organizations are on this list. That's not exclusive. And the business Sun Built, they, a lot of businesses helped us, but Sun Built just come through at the end when we were really desperate for some help. Team members, these are our team members, and they all had, did a lot of volunteer work. They contributed an awful lot of their expertise to build this, and deserve an awful lot of the credit for what you see today. So, I'll just take you on a quick tour of the memorial, kind of give you a close-up of some of the details. These are the pedestals. They're back absolute granite, and on the first pedestal is World War I and World War II, men of the Lompoke Valley that died. On the second pedestal is the World War, the Korean War and Vietnam. And the third pedestal is the training and other operations around the globe. And this one here is for, let me see, I got it here. For global war on terrorism. The fourth one is for global war on terrorism. This is the entrance pet, wall, and the wall, this is, has been covered now, there is a black absolute granite slab on that with the name Lompoke Valley Fallen Warriors Memorial on it. And here will be the logo of the Fallen Warriors Memorial in black absolute granite. It is absolutely stunning. This is an example of the landscape, and this part here has all of the seals that we had when the flagpole was first dedicated. Remember, I told you that little pedestal had the seals, the service seals on it? Well, now, they're located on these quadrants, on that octagon. This is where the veterans' wall will go, and the names of veterans who purchased tiles to go on the wall will be, it'll be installed. The wall is here, it's paid for, the black, the plaques are all here. We're just trying to get time from the technicians to be able to put it in place. And then after it is put in place, because there'll be a lot of stomping around in here when they put that in, we'll finish up the landscaping in that area. And this is another view of the landscaping, and the, this right here is another view of that. These are the benches that I was telling you about, that replaced the black absolute granite that would have been in a circle around here. We just couldn't afford that, it was just too much. I show you this view because of this little tree. During construction, I mean, we were really sympathetic to this little tree. It was dying, and the moss had, was eating it alive, and so, we dedicated ourselves to saving that little tree, if we could. So, one of our committee members, Debbie Jones and her husband Larry, went out, and they put this little cement thing around it, so that nobody would ever damage the roots. And we got a drip system on it, and we'd been feeding it, and you know what? We got little blooms on it. So, it's coming back. And you can't see it very well, but in this area here, oh, here's a little bit, you can see it, we have strips that people can purchase tiles if they wish, and this is a close-up of what those tiles look like. But you can purchase these from our committee, help us pay for upgrades to the memorial in the future. Here's, in conclusion, I'd just like to say, it's going to be November the 3rd at Beatty Park at 11 o'clock, and we will continue after construction to maintain and upgrade the memorial. And I would just, in conclusion, like to thank everyone for helping us create this fitting memorial to recognize the brave citizens of the Lompoke Valley that gave their life in our defense. Thank you very much, Mayor Lingle, citizens of Lompoke.
Are there any questions?
Any questions for Bob? We want to thank you. We see several members of your team here, and, I mean, I've got goosebumps on me right now. It's just such a wonderful project for us, and it's amazing what you have done so far. It's going to be even more beautiful by, in November when we open it up, so, thank you. Thank you for everything you've done, so.
Okay, one more presentation. Constitution Week. All right, all right.
Another here, another thing, and we have another button for you.
Oh, wow, okay, very good.
And for the members of the council.
Okay, sounds good. Do I have to share this with them? No, I'm just kidding.
Right here.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, this is a proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas, the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of all our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule of by law. And whereas, September 17th, 2018, marks the 231st anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Continental Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial anniversary, and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate it. And whereas, it is a privilege and duty of all American people to commemorate the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by appropriate ceremonies and activities. Now therefore, I, Bob Lingle, Mayor, City of Lompoke, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2018, as Constitution Week in the City of Lompoke, and urge our citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all of the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment.
Of course.
We also, we're members of the Daughters of America Coalition.
Come on up here by the microphone, okay.
And this is Cindy Allen, and I'm Nancy Thompson. We also have a display in the library if you're interested, and this happens every year from September 17th through the 23rd. And so, hopefully, next year, we'll have some little booklets to give you on the Constitution. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, you gave me mine. You gave me mine. Oh, there we go, okay. Okay, well, thank you very much. City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our Employee Appreciation Day is going to be September 27th. At this time, we'll be recognizing and thanking the employees for their dedicated service to the City of Lompoke, with some of these employees having been here over 30 years with the city, so it'll be a very nice attendant, attending, see that right, a nice ceremony we'll have for them. We'll be meeting over at the Dewey Center and presenting some awards to the different people for the different levels they've attained, and it'll be a very large potluck type of service we'll be doing. At a council request, we'll also be bringing back the ordinance concerning chickens. That'll be coming back to council on the 16th for discussion and approval. Something I just want to make sure, it had a little bit of a title issue there. The closed session tonight for the City Manager's Performance Review is actually to set the goals and objectives for the City Manager, with a performance review is going to be due at the beginning of the next, of this next New Year, so I just want to make that clear. We're also working on two emergency resolutions, one for the homeless crisis, which will allow the city to access the Continuum of Care Funds, or the Homeless Emergency Aid Program, which is also known as HEAP. And the second is to seek possible relief on the costs of the riverbed cleanup, so it'll be actually two different declarations we'll be coming forward with. The next agenda, we'll have an item on it that will be asking to cancel the meeting, cancel the meeting on November 6th, as it has commonly been done in the past due to the night of the election. And last but not least, I want to ask the police chief to come up and give a, just a brief update on the riverbed and the cleanup and where we are today. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor Lingle, Council, Pat Wallace, Police Chief. I just want to give a quick update. Thanks. So, Monday, we started our evictions, went very smoothly. About 55 people came to the Triage Center. Very surprising, we didn't anticipate that many, but between our partners and the city and the county, we were able to get enough tents and sleeping bags, so we have a pretty large camp out there. We are very intensively acting, working with the folks out there. County has sent mental health, public health, social services. The Public Defender's Office has sent several outreach workers, and today, we have about 10 people that have sought either drug treatment or entered the shelter system, which is really the key to this whole problem. Most of the folks out there are having drug addictions, and if we can get them off of their drug, maybe we can get them back to society and housed. I'm not going to sugarcoat it, we still are having criminal activity. It's in close proximity to the river, and so, folks are able to go back and forth in the cover of darkness, and so, we're working on some of that. We've made some arrests at the Triage Center, and we've kind of coalesced. It's been very chaotic, it's very difficult to create something you've never done, to work with folks you really haven't worked this closely together with before, and so, we all have, we come at it at a different angle. But as the end of last week and this week, we really kind of come together and decide, okay, look, if these people, the ones that are causing problems are disrupting the others that want help, then we're going to kick them out. So, we have been kicking people out of the Triage Center, and I think that's kind of important, because we don't really want drugs in our Triage Center, which we are having right now, because that's going to affect the people that are actually trying to get off drugs. And so, the patrol, we're patrolling, and we're doing, we're patrolling the river every single day. We've made three arrests for folks that have gone back and re-inhabited their campsites, arrests for trespassing. And the good thing about that, too, is the Public Defender's there, and her and her team could, can't work with that person in court. If they don't want to work with us at the Triage Center, and they don't want to, you know, obey this new mandate, then maybe we can get them some treatment in their court You know, I'm going to continue to ask for help from the public, you know, there's a lot of commentation on what we're doing, which is fine, but really, what is needed is help. You know, Pastor Brian is here with us tonight. He has a mission, Micah Mission, that's completely for this project. He's blowing through money, and so, if you want to donate to Micah Mission, or Coast Valley Treatment is driving somebody to Palmdale as we speak, and we're going to have somebody, we've had people go to LA Treatment Centers and into the Valley Treatment Centers. That takes time and money, so if people want to, Coast Valley Treatment Centers, planting a seed, Good Samaritan is feeding. Good Samaritan is feeding not only people in the Samaritan in their shelter, but they're also feeding twice a day in the Triage Center. So their food budget has gone up, you know, twice. So those are things we didn't budget for and really, you know, that's what the community could help with. So it's been great so far, a little chaotic, but we're working through it. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Councilor Starbuck.
55 people, did all of those come out of the river? Because rumor in town is that we've had a lot of outside guests show up down there.
We have had some guests, we have. And, and that's, that's, you know, it's kind of on us because we, you know, assumed the river, people were evicting would come to our camp and, and other folks did. But we're helping them too. There have been people showing up from San Andres and some other towns and we've, we've declined them and said that's, you know, we're, we're not the homeless shelter for the whole county. We can't be, we're a small town. I mean, we're stretched as it is with 55 people. So we're being very cognizant of that. A lady showed up today. She said, I'm recently homeless, today homeless, and I'd like to be checked in. And we said, no. We just, we can't, we just can't take that much on.
Councilor Mosby.
Yeah, want to congratulate you with Caltrans. I don't know how you got that going, but I know they just kind of stepped up on their own as well, but that was nice that that cleaned up because that was one of the real kind of starting points of the riverbed and such.
Yeah, we, you know, they, we've been engaged with them for a long time and they've been meaning to do that anyways. They need to prepare for this winter storms and that's a good place for them to, to use and stage from. And it was kind of hard to stage from it when it was kind of taken over, so.
No, but I've heard nothing really well, a few hits there and there, but you guys are really doing a good job. It's not, other members of, of the county were thinking and believing that it was open for the whole county. So it's important to make sure that message gets out that it's not for everybody.
Yeah, we don't have the resources.
Chief, we're still on schedule for closing the Triage Center in 30 days?
Yes. So, you know, it's interesting, the, the folks that were living on the riverbed are very vastly different type of homeless. And, you know, some are very self-reliant. They didn't need any of this, they packed up and left and they're moved elsewhere. Some are extremely grateful for the opportunity to have services. And they're taking advantage of it. Some aren't going to take advantage of it. And, you know, if they don't do that in 30 days, and, and it's not for lack of us trying. I mean, there's 10, 15, 20 social workers out there every single day saying, what do you need? Let's do it right now. The Public Defender will put them in the car, take them in the courtroom, take care of their warrants. You know, there's, a lot of folks can't get their benefits that they've earned because they have a warrant they have to take care of. And it's small warrant, it's like, make those go away. And so a lot of benefits have been restored. But if people don't take advantage of it, then we're done in 30 days.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Throup, do you have a question for?
Well, not a question, I was just going to do a quick follow-up too.
Okay, good, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so the, the next phase of that too, of the, of the riverbed cleanup is actually the physical going in and removing all of the debris, which will be in the hundreds of tons. We had our first, well, not the first, but another meeting today to discuss that. We're getting closer to what that actual cost might be. And it, it is going to be very close to that half million dollar charge. So we still need to have other partners help us out. For a city of our size to take on something that really involves more than just the city of, of Lompoc, we need to do something. So as we get the next, we have the first cost in of a physical contractor coming in with an articulated boom crane to actually pull pieces out of the, the riverbed with his group coming through. The next group we're discussing is to go in and they would actually do the cleanup of the brush and the trees and cut them up so it is an opened cleared space so we can see what's going on. And there right now, it's very, very dense. Adding that into it, it'll be about $500,000 to get all of that done. So any help we can get from our county partners, our state partners, the emergency declaration we're going, I know it's sort of my pie in the sky dream, but if we can actually go all the way up and have FEMA do something, because it is an emergency with the rains that will be coming this winter. The degradation that we have on that riverbank is necessary to get something done. Why, why wait for that emergency to hit where the bank collapses? Why not have them help us beforehand? That's what the reason for the emergency declaration. The second quick one I had forgotten was also on the request for the November 6th. I'll also have the January 1st meeting as a potential meeting to cancel, being that it's New Year's Day.
Okay. Chief.
I just wanted to add one thing. You know, a lot of the community, they want to help and they want to go down and pick up trash. And, and I think it's, it's too dangerous. There's a lot of needles. There's a lot of caverns that they built that are hidden that they could fall in. And the hillside, you've all seen the hillside, it's, it's too treacherous. And so that's why we're not having a, a community cleanup, because that would be a month long and we might have some folks get hurt. So I think we just should have professionals do it. That's the City Manager and I's opinion.
I think we agree. Any questions for the City Manager? I do have one question. Give us again, you changed the name on the closed session, what is it?
Oh, it's, just calling it the, the City Manager's Performance Review, but it concerns the goals and objectives for the six-month review.
So this is within for the City Attorney. Goals and objectives, that should be an open session, we shouldn't be doing that in closed session.
We're going to have a discussion in closed session about what the City Manager's contract requires. Whether it requires a discussion of goals for the city or of goals as performance standards for the City Manager. Goals for the city would need to be discussed in open session. We will not do that in closed session. Goals as far as City Manager's performance goals or performance standards are something that we will discuss in closed session.
Okay, so it's not goals that we'd like the City Manager to accomplish for the city? That's not it?
We won't discuss that in closed session.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, anything else for the City Manager? Okay, public comment on the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items that are generally considered routine and will be passed with one motion by the council. So public comment on the consent calendar only. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment on the consent calendar, bring it back to the council. Again, the consent calendar consists of items that are generally considered routine, will pass with one motion by the council unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Does any council member wish to pull an item? Seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
And Councilor Mosby.
I'll say it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0, thank you. Okay, no staff presentations. Okay. Move on to now oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on any item that can come before the council. If the item is on the agenda, you may want to wait till it comes up. So we have time, a chance to review it for you.
Good evening, Councilmembers, John Lynn, Chairman of the Parks Foundation. I want to share the truth about the motorsports park and spending of tax dollars. Ron Fink, Bob Lingel, Janelle Osborne, Robert Cuthbert, and Shirley Sherman all say that over $600,000 in tax dollars were wasted on the motorsports park and the state grant is from taxes. The truth is simple. The California Legislature passed a fee that is added to the cost of the green sticker which all off-road vehicles must have. The fees go into a trust fund that can only be used to maintain or build off-road vehicle areas or for off-road law enforcement. The city only received $237,025 for work done from the state trust fund on the off-road motorcycle tracks. All of the money provided by the Motorsports Committee of the Foundation was from donations and local fundraisers, not taxes. The Foundation paid the city over $168,000 for the 25% match of the state grant and for work done by the city that was not covered by the grant. On November 19th, 2013, the City Council voted unanimously, including Councilmembers Lingel and Starbuck, to apply for the state grant. In the council motion, you will all recall, Councilmember Costa specified that no city funds could be used. You'll recall, staff repeatedly cited that portion of the motion for why they could not do something to move the project forward more quickly. The City Council certified the environmental document in December of 2016, which completed Phase 1 of the grant and allowed the state parks to reimburse city expenditures. In the end, the city had more grant funds from the Foundation than it needed and returned $7,600 to the Foundation. Phase 2 construction funds, which the city had agreed to spend under the grant of over $762,000, were lost. The grant, in the grant process, the city received 15% of the additional funds over the actual expenditures to cover miscellaneous costs. That 15% was about $35,000. So it was kind of free money. After the motorsports park was canceled in December of 2017, Mayor Lingel received a campaign donation of $1,941 between January 1st and January 30th, 2018, according to his campaign filings. And that was from the owners of Skydive Santa Barbara who'd opposed the park. That was seven weeks after the election and the records show that all of the campaign bills had already been paid. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'm Chip Arias, the President of Lompoc Police Officers Association. Obviously, based on what he said and you guys don't work real well together, so change might be good. But aside from that, I've been talking with a lot of people in the community and I'm hearing a lot of things about, comments about you guys gave us a raise and, oh, that's hurting your budget. That's not hurting your budget. Because you guys gave us, for the first time, I've been here 19 years now. For the first time in 12 years, you guys gave us something more than 1% a year. And I don't stay here for money, I stay here because of my community. You see the projects we're taking on. I know you guys watch the news, especially around this time of year. And you guys know, in the last three months, we've had 16 major events. More could have been catastrophic had certain officers not been trained in dealing with traumatic injuries. And that's how people got saved. You guys have done nothing to address the need of police officers. You're trying to fudge numbers as far as what we need. Look at every annual report. I understand we made concessions to maybe hold on to three bodies for this budget cycle. Well, this budget cycle will be over next July. That's fine, that puts our numbers to 48, not 44, not 46, 48. I'm well aware of the numbers, I don't come up and just talk. I don't come up and not research. You have done nothing to address that. You asked, you guys gave us a healthy raise. Everybody out there, we got a healthy raise, we're appreciative. We haven't, we've lost one officer since you gave us that raise. Okay? But then you took it out from underneath us, pulled the carpet out. You asked the chief for a 5% raise. He's the only department head that gave you what you asked for. And you still burned him for another $1 million. And we're still under because he's responsible for his, what he's doing. Look at all the things that we're doing, we need help. I don't mind working every day, I don't mind, but it's taking a toll on me. It's taking a toll on some of these other guys that work the heavy, do the heavy lifting. And it's getting a little tiresome. You know, you guys have set this tone about departments and general fund and where money goes to. I'm not going to get into that, their job's important as well. But I know we respond to more than 1,000 calls for service a month. 1,000. When we have maybe working at one time, at most, five, five to seven officers for six, seven hours over the weekend maybe, with the supervisor, where other departments are staffed full. You know, you got a building in here that's billowing with people. You got people everywhere in City Hall. If you look at where your vacancies are, they're all at our department and you've done nothing to address that. And if you're going out here and telling, oh, we support public safety, you're not really showing it. So I'd hope that something happens in the near future to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chip. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication. And we're going to go on to the council requests. It's item number four. Introduction of Ordinance Number 165218 to repeal Lompoc Municipal Code Section 1028140 rotating to time limits on street and sidewalk vendors. This is our City Attorney. Actually, Assistant City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Jeff Malavi, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here tonight to talk about our sidewalk vendor, our mobile vendor ordinance, specifically about sidewalk push carts and food trucks. The Lompoc Municipal Code has a section with a 10-minute time limit on stopping for sidewalk push carts and food trucks on the street. We received a letter a few months ago from an organization called the Institute for Justice challenging that section and alleging that it was invalid under the law. The City Attorney's Office did an analysis of the arguments that they made and found that there were court cases that in the past had invalidated time limits, 30-minute time limits, 90-minute time limits, and other shorter time limits like our 10-minute time limit for mobile vending push carts and for food trucks. The courts held that there was not a rational basis for a time limit and that in fact, it did not enhance public safety, but was detrimental to public safety because of the parking and going back into the street, stopping and starting that food trucks and push carts would need to do. So what we're recommending, or our plan is for the zoning code update to include numerous regulations on these types of uses. They're already in the draft public version of the zoning code update. The Planning Commission has not made it that far yet, so they haven't been discussed at a public hearing. But we do have a set of new mobile vending regulations in the zoning code update. So what we are recommending to the council is to repeal for now the section of the municipal code with the 10-minute time limit, which is Section 10.28.140. And to, when the zoning code update rolls around, to adopt legally valid regulations at that time. I would also mention that there was a bill signed by Governor Brown just yesterday, SB 946, that imposes even, even more requirements on the ability of cities to regulate sidewalk push carts. So we're going to have to be analyzing that bill and probably revising some of the regulations in the zoning code update due to that. It takes effect in January. So the staff recommendation is to waive reading and introduce the ordinance that's before you tonight that repeals the 10-minute limitation on sidewalk vendors and food trucks. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Councilor Vega.
Jeff, by, by repealing this ordinance, is it a free-for-all now until the zoning code update is implemented? Because can they actually run a food cart for 24 hours?
It's not a free-for-all because we still have a requirement in Title 10, which I forgot to mention, thank you for reminding me, that a permit is still required by the city engineer or the traffic engineer to operate one of these sidewalk food carts or food trucks. And under that permit, the city has the authority to determine the locations where the operator can sell their wares. That's what we have in the code right now. Honestly, if we kept the 10-minute limitation, it wouldn't be enforceable because it's illegal anyway. So we have what we have in the code.
I guess my question would be, can they operate from 11:00 PM till 8:00 in the morning? And, or is that, that's the part I was talking about as far as a, a free-for-all also? Or is that part of the permit process?
That's not part of the permit process. The permit in the code specifically allows us to regulate location. It does not say... us to regulate location, it does not say time of day. We do have those regulations in the zoning code update, however.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, I talked to you a little bit earlier about this today, and all these vendors will still require a business license.
Yes.
Is that correct? And we also talked about health permits, and you weren't sure about that, but I'm, I'm just going to make the assumption, I'm hoping that all these carts do have health permits if they're selling food products, so is there some way we can check on that?
I know that our code does not require them to show evidence of having a county health permit, but they may need one under county regulations.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Public comment. No one wants to speak to us, okay? We'll bring it back to the council. Oh, I'm sorry. No, you've got to come up to the...
Just what our attorney just mentioned, that the 10-minute issue, I mean, I'm just learning of this now, it just sounded very arbitrary in the first place to stop and go, but he explained that that would be null and void, but also, it seems to me that the time factor might be, wouldn't that correspond to just, like, locations, like if you're in a commercial neighborhood, for example? And, well, I'm probably, never mind, I'm just, it just seems like the time constraint sounded very arbitrary, but it sounded like it's illegal anyway, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the council. Councilor Starbuck.
Mr. Malavi, this would supersede anything else as far as, our traffic ordinance has a section in there about mobile vending and stuff also, that would automatically be updated with the acceptance of this resolution, right?
Not sure the ordinance you're talking about, but no, this ordinance would only repeal the 10-minute time limit restriction that's in Title 10. It wouldn't affect any other ordinance in the code.
Anyone else? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Vega.
I'll entertain a motion that we accept staff's recommendation of repealing this 10-minute time limit.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number five. Item number five is a discussion and consideration of authorizing the city manager to request a proposal from Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Office and Santa Maria Police Department to provide dispatch services for the city of Lompoc. I guess that's Mr. Walsh, or Chief Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor, council, myself and Chief Curis have been working on this for quite some time. You've read the staff report, we are, we've been constantly hiring in dispatch, we're extremely short, we're, we have two officers and a jailer working in our dispatch center, and, you know, we're, we're one injury or, or, you know, somebody getting hired somewhere else away from having to do this as an emergency. So I think it makes sense to look at our options. And so we had come to you a while back to ask about a feasibility study, and you allowed us to do that, but now we're, we're getting serious, we'd like to ask for RFP and get real numbers from, from both these agencies.
Okay, any questions? Any other, Chief Captain, he wants to say anything?
So, so Captain Mariani's in charge of dispatch, so if there's any, you know, if you want to get down in the details, he's the guy to ask.
Okay. Councilor Vega.
Captain Mariani, are there any additional costs to this service, or it's actually a public safety issue, is that correct? Is that why this is being brought to us, because of a lack of being able to retain our dispatchers?
Absolutely. And we are authorized to have eight dispatchers and one dispatch supervisor, we have not had a dispatch supervisor by title, so to speak, since January of this year, when the last one resigned. In that time, we've had to dedicate one of our sergeants to act as the acting supervisor for dispatch, along with his other ancillary duties. We're supposed to have eight dispatchers, and when I first got here, I looked at the workload and the formula, and usually, for a dispatch center our size, we should have probably 11 dispatchers, but we've survived for many years at eight dispatchers, which doesn't factor in if, you know, vacation times, injuries, training issues, or training requirements, so that impacts our service too. We are currently at three full-time dispatchers, and as the chief mentioned, we've had to augment dispatch with two police officers, who are working technically out of classification, and then we have a jailer who works anywhere from 60% to 90% of his time as a dispatcher as well. We also have a cadre of some part-time dispatchers, but they have full-time jobs, so a lot of times when we call out to them, if they're not available, that means that the, the core of six dispatchers have to work in excess of their required hours on any given week. So usually, a dispatcher should work three 12-hour shifts, and then another week where they work four 12-hour shifts, or an eight-hour shift within those, with those three 12-hours. Our dispatchers are working anywhere between four to five and sometimes six 12-hour shifts during a given week. They have done a remarkable job, but they are very, very weary, and as the chief mentioned, we're just one, one dispatcher calling in or getting ill or some other crisis to keep us from having to go to county under emergency situation.
So would our dispatch area here be disbanded, and would the infrastructure on a countywide basis, is it already in place, or is that going to be a brand-new infrastructure, should they decide to go to a countywide dispatch, you know, where everybody buys in, and are there more, are all the cities buying in, or is it going to just be a couple of cities into the county, county infrastructure?
Right now, I can't speak to that, I know that there is some discussion at the county, and if you looked at the last county supervisors' meeting where they talked about some, some form of a different version of dispatch systems, there's, there's a, been a push, not only nationwide, but in the state of California for some time, for many jurisdictions to consider regionalized dispatch for public safety. There's been several successful transitions to that, but it's very costly, but at one point, it's probably the best option to consider. It's costly, but it saves lives, and it creates efficiency as well.
So we're in the preliminary stages of seeing if this group can be created, or this dispatch center countywide, is there a model somewhere else that's already being used, that's been, that's been successful as far as retention, as far as with dispatchers?
In terms of regional dispatch, probably the two premier models right now are Contra Costa County and I believe San Diego, but our move isn't necessarily the impetus or the genesis for regionalization. Our move to go to the county or to Santa Maria to consider them is to be able to provide a critical function. If down the road, regionalization comes to be, that's going to be a decision for all of the policymakers to arrive at.
Cool, thank you. Councilor Mosby.
Is there time limitations for this RFP? How long is it going to take?
Well, we've gotten some preliminary numbers from the county, so I imagine that in short order, probably, the city of Santa Maria can do it as well. We're hoping in 30 days or less to come back and say, hey, these are some options, and then, of course, it'll be subject to the meet-and-confer process, and then we're going to have to look at how to best transition that, if it is approved by you.
And, reason why I say that is because you are in a critical state, and I don't know if the city attorney can help out, is there a process, because a lot of times, RFP, RFQ process can be 30-day, 60-day, 90-day noticing moving in forward, but is there, is there a mechanism to move this a little faster?
I mean, we can say that we want our responses to the RFP or the RFQ in a faster time period in less than 30 days. That's what I come up with.
Okay.
As I was going to say, just in general, it really, we could say we want it in two weeks, but it would depend upon the agencies and how quickly they can do their analysis and turn it around, but I think if we tell them it's an urgent matter, that they hopefully work faster on it.
I just hate to see us in this situation, that, because I know some of the RFP, RFQ process can be three months, six months or something, so is there, you know, with the looks on their faces and the way that the key words are in here, it needs to be expedited, so.
Councilor Starbuck.
This has always been a problem, and I'm glad that we're going proactive on it, but looking down the road, what is our guarantee that all of a sudden, we don't, we contract with the county, and then all of a sudden, we're paying a 10% addition every year? Is there a way in our RFP that we can get a guarantee of CPI increases, or what's going to guarantee our costs beyond the 19 budget?
You know, I can't speak to that, because the, the natural trend is costs always go up. If you look at any type of service, they're going to go over, up over a period of time. But I think that would be something that the policymaking board or those who decide on the contract could, could make those stipulations or make those conditions, but we can expect an increase, I mean, it'd be foolish for me to say that we're not going to have increases. Whether we stay, you know, if we were able to survive on our own, we're going to have an increase in costs as well.
Understood, but I guess in the RFP, it would, I would sure like to address that if Santa Barbara County is going to an additional 2%, our share should be 2% vice 5% or something, you know, across the board.
Sure.
Councilor Vega.
Council, Mayor, I just wanted to say, this is kind of the first step to regionalization. With regionalization, there will be some initial costs, but then they will probably go down. Right now, we're probably paying over $100, $110 a call. With regionalization, and Ventura County has this with their fire and EMS, they've lowered their cost per call down to about $50, $50 per call. So the initial getting in will be, might be a little bit more, there's going to be some costs that we haven't even foreseen yet, but overall, during the long term, it will, there will be some savings. You know, and there's, there's also some benefits that comes with dispatch, and some of them are, the closest resource will be responded. No longer will Santa Barbara County's engine have to respond all the way through the city, endangering our citizens and themselves to respond to a call in Megalito, when we're one minute away. You know, that takes them nine minutes to get up there. We'll probably, so the closest resource will respond, and also, we will have the benefit of EMD, which is Emergency Medical Dispatch, which we don't have now, and that could probably reduce some of our calls too, or lower them to a lower level, a Code 2 call per se, instead of a Code 3 call. So it comes with added benefits and added safety. And this is also, like, this has been going on for many, many years. In the, in the past two master plans, both of them, in the fire master plans, both of them have said that we should explore outside dispatch sources.
Who asked that question? Okay, Councilor Mosby. Did you have your light on?
Yes. Just quickly, is, is there a reason why we haven't had any preliminary numbers from Santa Maria? Is there any reason?
So I've, I've talked to their chief, just keep in mind, they have the Cadillac version up there, they have probably the most sophisticated dispatch center, I'd say on the western coast. So it's going to be expensive from them, we would have to go to Motorola radios, which are how much each?
Very expensive.
Yeah, very expensive. Fire, firefighters can't count that high, I don't know. They're expensive, though. And, you know, we're going to have to go to them anyways, and, okay, I'm not going to get out of here now. But, you know, at some point, we have 20-year-old radios that we carry, at some point, we're going to have to buy radios as well, so, but, but I talked to the chief today, and he says, whatever happens tonight, let me know.
Councilor Vega.
Chief Curis, I think I've had a conversation with you about the cost of, and maybe the cost share of upgraded equipment. I believe, maybe you can kind of tell us where all of you are at as far as age of equipment that you're currently using, and how far off are we from state-of-the-art stuff, okay, that probably would be part of this commitment?
Well, that's one of, one of the problems that we have, our equipment is, is very old, our dispatch consoles are very old, they, they all need updating and replacing. We're probably talking in the millions of dollars just to bring our equipment we have now up to the state-of-the-art, and we'll be required in the future to go to 700 megahertz, which will be very expensive. Santa Maria's already there, so.
Got you. Your phones aren't static here or anything, they're not that old, are they? Just kidding here, sorry. Thank you, thank you so much.
Councilor Osborne.
The last question is, the current employees in dispatch, will they be protected and brought into and transfer into dispatch, so that we aren't eliminating jobs, we're making sure they're, they're still able to potentially work for the other dispatch centers, since they'll be familiar with our community and be a benefit to the services.
Well, normally, when you have a transition like this, or when someone gets absorbed, they're given an opportunity to, to go with that agency, but that agency has the right to impose its hiring requirements as well. But it would be in their, in their best interest to take our folks, I mean, they're experienced, they're outstanding dispatchers, but that agency would have to make that call.
And then I have, I guess, maybe a comment, but it's a question as well, so, Santa Barbara, you know, our phones work on Wi-Fi, Santa Barbara has a tower right here, Santa Maria does not have a tower in town, and there's hills between Lompoc and Santa Maria, is that a concern?
That may be a concern, they may have to put in a repeater, say, off of Harris Grade or something like that, in order to, to service us. Santa Barbara County, right now, we're surrounded by their repeaters and their frequencies, and as far as the fire department goes, we could probably go to them in the next few weeks if need be.
To the county.
We already have their frequencies on our equipment, and at times, we had to use their dispatch because we couldn't get ahold of ours.
So that, that's one of my major concerns, is, you know, do we have the towers, do we have the repeaters, and I know Santa Barbara County does have them all around us, so.
Hey, Mayor, I have my smart guy here, Sergeant Martin is my techie, do you mind if he takes a shot at that?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, council, so, we've spoken to Santa Maria a little bit, and their technology is really a computer network, and the only thing that would be required is for them to set up a microwave that would shoot across the hillside into our city, and the problem is solved. It literally is simply connecting an internet cable almost to the, to the system, and we would be connected to them.
Simple for you. Okay, any other questions? Thank you. We'll open this up to the public for comment. Okay, everyone feel safe? You're safe. Okay, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Councilor Vega.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we accept the request for the RFP here for Santa Barbara, move forward and get our, move forward and get our estimate.
Okay, Councilor Mosby.
I'd second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0, okay. Okay, the council is now going to recess to a closed session, where we have one item, it is a, whatever he said earlier, it's not a public performance evaluation, city goals is what we're going to discuss in our closed session, and we will be back here when we finish up.
Just, just to clarify for the record, Mr. Mayor, it is a public employee performance evaluation, closed session, but it's not really going to be a performance evaluation, it's going to be a discussion of the standards by which the council will evaluate Mr. Throop in his performance evaluation scheduled for January.
That's what we're going to talk about, so. Okay, so we will see you in whatever... Okay, so we will see you in whatever time it takes us.
Okay, we are returning from closed session. And, um, let's see, Mr. City Attorney, anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the one item on the agenda, which is public employee performance evaluation of the city manager staff. And the council had a discussion regarding that item, but no reportable action was taken.
Okay, thank you. Written communications?
Nothing.
None. Oral communication, this is your last opportunity to speak to us for up to two minutes. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close our oral communication and go to council requests and committee reports. We'll start with Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report, sir.
Okay, Councilmember Mosby.
I attended the subregional SB CAG meeting this past Wednesday representing the city of Lompoc. Also want to give a shout out to Joe Gonzalez where the, I believe he said it's his 39th years for the Mexican Independence Day this last Sunday, well attended, as well as a comment out that the vacancy report for city staff employment is available. There's been a lot of questions and missed comments about how many people are employed or not employed. Contact the city clerk, I've been told she would have a copy of that list so people can see what really is going on. The other thing I wanted to mention again is this, we're going to try again this next Friday, patching holes in Ryan Park. I think we're getting close to somewhere between four and five tons of material we've put in there, leveling out the gopher holes. And it looks like we have a new member coming onto the team. Former councilmember Skyler is going to aid and assist in the gopher eradication at Ryan. So we're taking this to the next level. So anybody interested? We have a number of people that are showing up, so reach out to myself or Councilmember Starbuck.
Councilmember Starbuck?
No reports.
Councilmember Rosborn?
I attended the California Police Chief Conference with Chief Walsh who managed to convince the Police Chief Association to have their conference in Lompoc. And it was a pleasure to meet all of the chiefs from across California and how much they had enjoyed their time in Lompoc and plan to return. So I appreciate him inviting me to be present as mayor pro tem that night and thank him for exposing so many individuals to our great community. And then last week, I attended the League of California Cities Conference representing the city as voter and did stay and attend and voted on behalf of the city. And both of the amendments and resolutions passed with additional amendments. And you can find those on the League of California Cities website. And the city did pay for my attendance there.
Okay, and I attended many meetings, but none at a city expense, so I have nothing to report. So with that, the city is adjourned to a regular city council meeting, 6:30 PM on October 2nd. Thank you and good night.[1097.55]